Call up any particular students and I'll have them go stand next to you so that they get a picture, a good picture at home. And if you're not, that's fine.
I'll call up some students in a minute, is that alright?
Yeah.
Okay, so, my name is Peter Dingerfield. I am a physics teacher here at the high school, but I'm also the Quiz Bowl coach, and that's what we're spotlighting tonight, is the success of the Quiz Bowl program specifically this year, but in previous years as well. So I've been asked to speak briefly about what Quiz Bowl is and how we've done. Quiz Bowl is an academic, the best way I could put it, like a trivia competition almost, right? It's an academic knowledge competition where two schools compete against each other, and there's a reader who will read questions, and the kids get points for buzzing in before the other team, answering a question, and then getting some bonus questions usually. At the end of the game, team with most points wins. So it's an academic quiz competition, similar to Jeopardy. It's more team-based on that. So, other places have done Knowledge Bowl. I did Knowledge Bowl when I was in high school. We do Quiz Bowl here. So that is the basics for what Quiz Bowl is. Now, how did our kids do? So, I went back. Online, they have records all the way back to 2007, I believe. Here's what these kids have accomplished so far this year. Man, I'm gonna get emotional. Crap. Here's why I'm getting emotional. This is my fourth year coaching this team, which means I've got a couple of seniors out here who have been with me for four years, and they've been fantastic. And I'm gonna get emotional about it, because that's what I do. This year, as far as I can tell, was the first year they'd ever won a tournament. They won the middle and small school tournament. And in fact, during the middle and small school tournament, they qualified three teams for Nationals. St. Louis Park has never qualified more than one team for Nationals, and they qualified three this year. So, they won the middle and small school championship. They won the Metro West Conference Championship for the second time in three years this year, beating teams such as Chaska Chanhas and the Neil St. Margretes. I think there's a couple of other schools, but I can't remember off the top of my head. Robbinsdale Armstrong. But, they won the Metro West Conference Championship for the second time in three years. And then, we went to Nationals, and like I said, there were three teams. I took 20 kids. The program has grown each of my four years. We started with four, four kids, and we've grown since then. And we took 20 kids. And this year, they exceeded all of my expectations. St. Louis Park, the A-team, finished seven and three in the first 10 rounds. And, to put that in context, no St. Louis Park team has ever finished better than five and five, and that was a team two years ago. The best record before that was four and six. Seven and three gets you into the double elimination round of the playoffs at Nationals. And this is a, this is a field of 352 teams, I believe, and after the end of day one, actually after the end of day two, after the first 10, they were top 30, I believe. This has never been done before at our school. As far as I can tell, there's only one other school in Minnesota that's ever done better on day one. Now, granted, I didn't go through every single Minnesota school, this is a quick check, but only one school has ever done better from Minnesota while at Nationals. And so, the kids made it to double elimination. They, they did lose, unfortunately, we did not win Nationals, but they far exceeded any expectations I had. The B-team did as well as any of our other teams ever done before. They went four and six as well. And the C-team, which had, I believe, 10 kids on it, right? They were all getting in and out. They even finished with a couple of wins. So, that's team highlights. Individual highlights, we had a top eight and a half percent scorer. So, kid, Will Steib finished, I believe, 132nd out of 1,600 kids. Quinn, Quinn Whitlow, who I'll introduce to you in a second, he finished in the top 10%, I believe. Top 12%. I don't know. Neil Walsh finished in the top 18%. And then, even Truman Philbrandt, one of our freshmen, finished in the top 20% of points per game out of all of the students who went to Nationals. And so, let's see, going through my list of anything else that I want to talk about real quick. I think, from a team standpoint as a coach, like I said, I could not have been more excited and more proud of what they did on the opening day where they went six and one, which is flabbergasting. And then, to go seven and three overall in the first 10 games is far more than I expected. So I'm gonna call up some kids individually real quick to give them some, just a little spotlight. So when I call your names, you please come up and stand next to me. Truman Philbrandt.
(applause)
As I already spoke about Truman, Truman was a, oh, yeah, come on. As I already spoke about Truman, Truman was a top 20% scorer. He was actually the 20th overall freshman scorer this year at Nationals. So out of hundreds of freshmen, he was the top 20 of all the freshmen that went to Nationals this year. So Truman did a great job. Thank you, Truman. Why don't you stay up here? Daniel Hunnigs. Real quick, Danny Hunnigs was on the A-team that went seven and three in the first 10 games. Danny and one of the, and the next guest that I, or the next student that I'm gonna recognize, have been with this program for four years. They were the part of the core that started it. Ayana Nathan, please. Ayana was one of the other freshmen that started the program with me. Like I said, when I started, I had, I had four kids. And Danny, Ayana, and then a couple of upperclassmen. I guess Kaylee was there for a year, too, right? No, she wasn't. Never mind. I had four kids. Aaron, Aaron was here. They, they grew the program to, I've had over 35 kids participate this year in Quiz Bowl. So Ayana and Danny had a huge role in the previous four years. In fact, I was just speaking with Ayana, and Ayana brought the next player. Anil Palay, please. Anil joined us as a sophomore. He was on the B-team that went four and six this year. Anil, did you went to Nationals with us last year?
I did.
He did? So he is a veteran, and he played really well. And then I have Quinn Whitlow. Quinn Whitlow's on. Quinn Whitlow is also on the A-team. And Quinn actually went to the individual Quiz Bowl championships this year, where he finished top 40, I believe, 38th. I think tied for 38th in the individual portion alone. And so, the strength of all of these kids propelled St. Louis Park to easily their best performance ever at Quiz Bowl Nationals. I couldn't be prouder. I couldn't be happier. And obviously, this is only a small segment of the 20 kids that went, but I got mostly seniors. They're working, they're playing soccer, they're coaching hockey, they're, they're all over the place. But I couldn't be prouder of these five kids. If anybody's got a question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Can you, Peter, just read the names of the other students that didn't make it that were on the team?
Oh, you would like all the names?
Yeah, I would.
Sure, absolutely.
I signed all those. You guys stay there, we're gonna take a photo, so just don't go anywhere yet.
I have, I have a list of them, yes. So, like I said, I took 20 kids this year. Here's the names of all of them. Cyrus Abrahamson, Griffin Barden, Beck Burgland, Jenna Cook, Erica Dudley, Patrick Jerf, Kaylee Hanson Mahoney, Max Holden, Samuel Jensen, Aaron Kasich, Ilsa Olson, Jack Ostrowski, Will Steib, Neil Walsh, and Zoe Zajcik. Any other questions you guys want answered about Quiz Bowl? Yeah?
Do, do all these folks need to be well-rounded in their questions, or when they're on a team, do they have specialties from certain subjects?
Oh, so that's the best part. So you can put together, you can put together a really well-rounded team. For example, Quinn here, Quinn knows literature forwards and backwards. He knows more literature than I've ever even experienced, right? So I had him on a team with Jack Ostrowski, who is our science guy, Will Steib, who is a history and geography guy. Danny here was on the A-team. He's our politics guy. He's our sports guy. So, the best way to do it is to get four kids who have a well-rounded knowledge, put them all together on a team. It's not the only way to succeed. There are, there are teams that are one-man teams or one-woman teams, but the best way is to get four kids with a wide variety of knowledge, put them all together on one team.
You want to shake your hands and get a photo?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What do you think of a well-rounded one?
Mr. Dingerfield, what's your specialty?
Your specialty is 100% current events. And it's also, but, but it's, it's part of that history that's missing, right?
Thank you.
It is.
I don't know what my specialty is. I just think.
No, we're gonna take a photo, so we're gonna cluster together.
Yeah, I'm getting out of this.
No, 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 no.
My pleasure.
Come up a little bit so we're not...
If you wanted, I could go on and on about diversity of our kids coming down.
Look at me first.
You should know the book is better.
I can tell.
All the kids are...
Thank you, thank you, parents, your support of us.
Thank you.
That's great, that's awesome.
We're all so proud of you. Thank you so much for taking the time out of your summer to come down tonight and let us really recognize your accomplishment.
If you would like to take it.
I was gonna question why I didn't...
And what I said when I was not on, on a mic was that we know that the parents really also contribute hugely to this success, so we thank all of you for everything that you have done. Those of you who are here, and those of you may be watching at home, or just know that you're thanked. So, you are not required to stay for the board meeting. We actually kind of expect you'll probably wanna leave, but the choice is yours.
And just an extra little congratulations to the graduating seniors. Best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So now we are up to the approval of the agenda. And on our agenda, tonight we have the superintendent's report, then we have several study session topics, the fiscal year 20 budget discussion, governmental accounting standards, Board GAZV 84 student activity accounting, the climate leadership resolution, West Metro Education Program, otherwise known as WMAP, update, policy development first reading, policy 912, adult education programs, policy development second reading, policies 905, community involvement in decision-making, 907 rewards, and 910, early childhood family education. We have our consent agenda, and then we have our action agenda. On the action agenda is approval of 2018-19 probationary non-renewal staffing resolution, the climate leadership resolution, policy development second reading, and policies 905, community involvement in decision-making, 907 rewards, and 910, early childhood family education, followed by communications and transmittals, then adjournment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Moved by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's 5-0. First up is the superintendent's report.
Chair Goris, members of the board, this evening, for my superintendent's report, I would like to highlight three recent events that I think really speak to the tremendous community in which we all have the opportunity to reside. The first event that I would like to highlight is, just occurred last Thursday, a little event called our commencement ceremony. It was the 120th commencement ceremony here in St. Louis Park. And we had an opportunity to greet, congratulate over 352 students who received their diplomas that evening. We heard some from some tremendous student speakers, and had an opportunity to hear from Mark Rosen, who was a distinguished alumni that evening from the class of 70. I would also like to just take a moment and congratulate our synchronized swimming team. Similar to our Quiz Bowl team, we have an exceptional synchronized swimming team, and they recently placed third at the state meet on May 23rd and May 24th in Rochester, finishing behind Wayzetta and Stillwater. So congratulations to Coach Linda Gus and the synchronized swimming team. And lastly, I just wanna acknowledge our fifth graders. Today, I had an opportunity to get to three of our elementary schools, Susan Lindgren, Peter Hobart, and Park Spanish Immersion. And that, this past week, on June 4th, I had an opportunity to attend Peter Hobart's Celebration of Learning and Exhibition. And, you know, I would probably say, this is my third favorite event of the year, behind the start of school, the first day of school, graduation, and then the fifth grade Celebration of Learning events at all of our schools are tremendous. Got to see some wonderful performances from our students, excellent fifth grade student speakers talking about their experience and what they've learned, and most importantly, the impact that the adults at our elementary schools have had on them as they are transitioning to middle school. So, thank you, fifth graders and elementary staff for all that you've done, and I look forward to all of our fifth graders transitioning to sixth grade, which are at our middle school. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. So, first up, we have the fiscal year 20 budget discussion, and this will be led by Patricia Magnuson, who's the Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Goris, Superintendent O'Sai, board members. We are here with the purpose of reviewing our recommended fiscal year 2020 budget for St. Louis Park Public Schools, and to receive direction from the board in preparation for your action on the budget on June 24th. And we met prior to this meeting and had a long discussion about some of the components of the budget we'll be talking about tonight. So I wanna just review the budget assumptions. We talked about this with the board earlier this year. We have included in the budget a 2% increase in the basic funding formula, which is what was included in the education funding bill, and we're very happy for that increase in the funding formula. We are using in enrollment a 352-student kindergarten and 4,555 students overall, which is, it's basically flat. It's down just a little bit from the current year. We're holding our class sizes at, at the historic level, so we're staffing, the budget assumes staffing, at those class size levels based on our enrollment projections. We did do an increase earlier this spring to fees in the general fund for athletics, and we also increased our lunch prices. And then, of course, we will always stay above the board's minimum fund balance of 6%, as is included in policy. And this budget will have twice that fund balance, in its unassigned fund balance. So we are well within that guideline. The first fund I wanna talk about is the general fund, and this just represents what is the unassigned general fund balance. So what would be included in that calculation of a fund balance percentage? And just the highlights here are that expenditures in this budget exceed revenues by just over $1.4 million. That's as to be expected with a 2% increase. And that leaves us a fund balance of $8,117,000, or 13.41%, well above that 6% minimum. I wanted to just talk about some of the assumptions that are built into those revenues and expenditures. As we said, the formula increase, the student count. Additionally, we added about $100,000 in additional special education revenue. One of the commitments that the legislature made in this year's funding for education is that special education would be held harmless, so that while we spend more than we bring in for special education, that's called the cross-subsidy. What the commitment was, is that special education cross-subsidy would be held flat, and one of the methodologies was to add cross-subsidy aid. And so, I would not be surprised if we had additional revenue come out of just the basic formula. It's very difficult to calculate that, especially this early. But we do know there's a new revenue category called cross-subsidy aid. So we did increase the revenue budget for that $100,000, and that is reflected in revenue. On the salary and benefits side, so on the expenditure side of the ledger, we have increases for unsettled contracts, and those are listed in the draft budget book. We have several contracts, including the teacher contract, which is open for the fall. So what we do is look back over the last few years and build an increase that's typical into the budget for salaries and benefits. We have staffing numbers to meet the class size guidelines, as we said, based on the enrollment projections. We did build in a $200,000 contingency into the budget. In the event that some unexpected expenditure arises that we can, that we need to fund through the general fund, including unexpected increases in enrollment, the happy event, we might have increases in enrollment that we need to staff for as we move through the summer. And then, we have an assumption that we're moving about $600,000 worth of costs for severance for employees who leave the district, who still qualify for some severance benefits. Long ago, those benefits were removed from contracts, so no new employees since many years ago qualify. But we still have employees that qualified under a grandpersoned severance benefit, and so we're gonna move that out of the unassigned general fund. It will still remain in the general fund, but we'll be talking about it separately as part of a reserve for severance. There's some other items in the general fund that are capital-related, and I just wanna highlight those, that also in the general fund, we have, we include by state law, capital-related items like operating capital, and we went through that with the board in detail, and it will also be in the budget book that's released to the community, all of the line items. The technology levy that was voter-approved is also included in the general fund, and our funding for long-term facility maintenance. So the revenues are really per the levy and aid formula, and the expenditures are very similar to the assumptions we used in the general fund. Some salaries and benefits are included in capital-related revenue sources, such as the technology staff that's paid for out of the technology levy. And we have a deliberate spend-down of operating capital that we talked with the board about. We have a, we have a healthy fund balance in our operating capital fund, and so we're deliberately trying to spend that down over time while keeping a reserve, because we have many curricular areas that are being reviewed right now, so that we are sure that we have enough reserve to purchase textbooks as needed. So that's why there's a variance in these capital-related budgets of expenditures exceeding revenues. Outside of the general fund, the district accounts for many other activities of the district that are out, that can't run through the general fund by law. So for instance, school and nutrition cannot be commingled with the general fund. So we keep a separate set of accounts for school and nutrition, and in that budget that we're proposing, it's basically balanced. Revenues equal to expenditures. And that includes our increased meal prices and assumptions based on enrollment about student participation. And then, that is also a contract that is not settled yet for next year, the child nutrition employees. And so we use some historical assumptions for that budget as well. The community service fund, also by state law, is separate from the general fund, and this includes early regular community education, early childhood family education, school readiness, those types of activities. And that's basically a flat budget as well, and will end next year with a $768,000 fund balance. One of the assumptions that we talked to the board about in this, earlier this spring, or late winter, was including facility rental fees that the community education department manages, and having them reflected in the community service fund, which is, is generally how those are reflected. And that, and salary and benefit increases for any unsettled contracts that might, might be employees of the community service fund. There's a building construction fund, which, which represents the proceeds from the voter-approved bond issue, the $100.9 million that the voters approved. We do have about $1,250,000 of revenue in the building construction fund, and that's all interest earned on the proceeds as we work through these projects over the next three to four years. And we have expenditures of $38 million. So of course, it's a big fund balance reduction, but that's because we're taking reserves from the bond sale after that successful voter approval, and spending them down over time, and then accruing revenue as best we can with investments. So we still have 46, almost $47 million anticipated at the end of next year to, for the projects that remain after that time. And then, within the debt service fund, also a fund that has to remain separate from the general fund, this is where principal and interest payments are made on debt that's outstanding over the years. So it'll be more recently, long-term facility maintenance bond issues, if we have that bond issue successful, and other voter-approved bond issues in the past. So revenues and expenditures are basically flat. What we have to do by law is levy, or the revenue, which is 100% tax levy. We have to levy at 105% of what's needed, so that we don't get into trouble on our, on our debt payments, which never happens, but that's a requirement, and then it gets paid back to taxpayers over time as the fund balance accrues. So you can see that we're growing a fund balance in debt service, so I suspect we'll have a reduction in the levy for that growing fund balance this fall. And it's just our scheduled principal and interest payments on expenditures. We have an internal service fund. We haven't included a budget yet, but that's where we will be managing our self-funded medical and dental program outside of the general fund on behalf of our employees. We have a self-funded medical, our dental, we've had for a while, and next year we'll begin with a self-funded medical. The budgets, we will determine once we have a little more experience with this. We also carry a trust and agency fund. Within the trust and agency fund are the accounts, are the funds that we have set aside for other post-employment benefits. Again, we haven't budgeted for that. We wanna look at some activity. It has a negative fund balance, only because we have to display on our books the present value of other post-employment benefits that would be paid in the future. And those are medical benefits for employees that retire from the district that meet certain sets of criteria. Employees for the last several years have not qualified for these types of benefits, because they were long ago negotiated out of contracts. But we do have a responsibility for those employees that were grandpersoned and continue to retire with those types of benefits. So that's why there's a negative balance. We actually have over $2 million in, in the cash account for other post-employment benefits. As we talked about in our earlier session, we're going to consider, as early as this fall's levy, a pay-as-you-go levy that's authorized under state law, that school districts can fund the cost for other post-employment benefits with an annual tax levy. And so I, we will bring that forward for consideration by the board this fall. I wanna just talk a little bit about the big picture, particularly in the general fund. While we do have a declining fund balance, it has been planned for, and it's not alarming, but it is something that we need to be mindful of, that we have a pattern that we've established of expenditures exceeding revenues. But I want to just make sure that the board and our community understand some of the things that, that we need to think about. So things that contribute to our long-term stability, one of them being our 10-year operating referendum, that has an inflationary factor built into it. That's one of the levers that the legislature has given school boards to help fund education. That was passed in 2017 for 10 years, so that will be around for a while, and that inflationary increase will certainly be helpful. Enrollment growth will also help with that, 'cause it's a per-student, it's a per-student formula. We have a 10-year capital projects levy for technology that was passed in 2013, so, you know, we're over halfway through the life of that 10-year levy. That's been an important way to save costs in the, in the general fund, the unassigned general fund, that many school districts are using in the metro area. So the costs of our ongoing technology and the staff that supports our technology can be supported outside of the unassigned general fund. Our long-term facility maintenance funding that we discussed with the board, and there's an upcoming bond issue, is also very important. Deferred maintenance costs can start to eat into the general fund if we don't have, if we don't use another tool the legislature gave us, with, which is long-term facility maintenance. And also, a happy byproduct of improved air handling units and replaced electrical components are that the cost of electricity should go down, the costs of utilities in general should go down over time. That will help us to rein in the growing costs in the general fund. And then our other post-employment benefits trust, there was a bond issue that the, the school district passed several years ago to set up the, the funds that are there. And then if we begin to levy for OPEB, beginning with this fall's levy, it will set up another way that we have a long-term funding source... way that we have a long-term funding source for something that we can remove from our general, unassigned general fund and fund separately. So the, the legislature has given us lots of tools, a few tools, and, and woefully inadequate funding at 2% increase, but there are some tools that this board has taken advantage of and that will continue to use to support the general fund. Here's some other things, oh, that, that we just know that we have to be thinking about. Continuing budget efficiencies. We're looking at different ways to think about printing. Almost anything you can think of, our staff is very creative in thinking about ways that we can, can save costs over time, so we're looking at all the ways we can be more efficient, printing being one of the areas we're looking at right away. Energy savings and energy efficiency, not only through LTFM, but being mindful about lights that turn off, and just the way that we utilize energy in our district. Our other post-employment benefits levy will be an important source of future revenue. We've got self-funded medical insurance beginning. I don't know that it will save us money in the near term, but in the long term, it will help us, it will help guard against budgets for medical benefits that are, that go up and down, and then that put pressure on us at the negotiations table when we have medical costs that, that we can't control. So having that under the, the control of our employees and being watched by our employees should help us over time. And then as Aston has talked about several times, our focus on enrollment and increasing our enrollment, and being mindful of the kindergartners that we know about that have not yet registered, and families as they leave the district, making sure we understand the reasons for that, so we can retain as many of our St. Louis Park community members as possible. And we always have to keep pressure on the legislature. Public education is, is written into the constitution of this state, and we have an obligation to the students of our community that, that we educate them, and so our legislature, we need to keep pressure to make sure that the funding stays current with what we need. Here's the next steps. I wanted to show you that we're working in three years, because I think sometimes it can get confusing, like what year are we working on at the moment? So on June 21st, you're going to be approving next year's budget for fiscal year 2020. And then come this fall, in September, we'll start looking at the preliminary levy, and we've talked a little bit about some upcoming changes to the levy through long-term facility maintenance, and now through other post-employment benefits. That's really revenue not until fiscal 2021, so we're really looking out into the future. This October, we'll know a little bit more about the fall enrollment for next year, that might be a factor that could adjust next year's budget, one way or the other, depending on how enrollment comes in. And then we'll start right away working on the budget process for, not next year, but the following school year. We'll start right away thinking through, do we need to start talking about budget cuts? We have started with our audit already today. The auditors came for preliminary fieldwork for this year's budget, and we'll be bringing to the board about November, the audit report for last year. Now, the results of last year's audit could have, will have an impact on next year's budget, because it will influence our beginning fund balances. So it could cause us to want to do something different for next year even. So in December, you'll approve the final levy for fiscal 2021, and then once all of that happens throughout the fall, we have a really better picture of fiscal year 2020's budget, so we might come into a normal pattern of updating the budget once a year, in about January or February, with results from last year, with what we know now about the tax levy, with new enrollment numbers, and any other things that we might want to adjust for the budget. I think that's, that's the budget.
Thank you, Patricia. Any questions? We did meet for about an hour with Patricia before this meeting to go over some of this information, so some of our questions were asked there, we might, might not want to talk about them again here, so, or have new ones.
I just want to, excuse me, highlight that energy savings that you talked about, and how that is actually addressing a couple of different areas that the district and the board is working on, as we are considering tonight a climate leadership resolution. So, energy savings is lining up with our goals in multiple ways. So thank you for that.
And I agree with you that we do need to continue to pressure our partners at the state and federal legislature, especially with the special ed cross-subsidy, because it is an unfunded mandate on two levels, state and federal. Our cross-subsidy had been 4.8 million, great to hear, it's only going to be 4.7 million, but that's still a lot of money that we are mandated to cover, and it, it serves the students' needs, and that's important, but we don't have the real funding mechanism required to take care of it, and, and we do the best we can with your direction, but we still need the state and federal partners to do their share.
Patricia, I just want to highlight what I, what I heard is, and get you to confirm it again, is that the budget that's being proposed, that we'll be voting on at our next meeting on June 24th, should not have an impact on class size. As we've had class size this year, we're not expecting the budget to be a cause of any change in class size.
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it, and all your hard work. Now, you're still up there, because next is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB 84 Student Activity Accounting Report.
That's right, this is exciting stuff, people. So, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board puts out statements and pronouncements that impact the way that school districts have to account for certain things. And by state law, we follow the requirements from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So what I want tonight, or what we're hoping, is that you'll just understand in concept this idea, that this new statement has, how it has influenced what we need to do and to prepare for action on June 24th. GASB statements come out regularly, this one just requires some board action. Normally, you would just hear about these during the audit process, but we need the board to take some action on this one. So, GASB 84 was released in December of 2018, and its objective was to improve guidance regarding the identification of fiduciary activities, so the way we account for certain activities, and in this case, it's student activity accounts. The requirements go into effect for next year, but we want to take board action now, because that means it's effective on July 1st, 2019. And the Department of Education has a subcommittee of GASB that works with several auditing firms and several folks like me from school districts, I am not on this subcommittee, but folks that do work like mine, to create an implementation draft, and that was released on May 30th. So we're really working just day by day, trying to make sure we're, we're ready to go come July 1st. So here's what it requires. Student activity accounts must be under school board control. So we do the accounting in the business office for our student activities, but they are run through a QuickBooks set of accounts, but now they need to be run through the general fund, and we'll have a restricted fund balance for extracurricular activities. So they've, so it'll be a part of the general fund, it'll be another one of those things in the general fund that needs to be accounted for separately. There's a new finance code and a restricted fund balance. And one of the things, to be clear, and we do not do this currently, is we can't pay for staff salaries and benefits out of student activity accounts. And these are basically accounts that are, that are under the control of students. Generally, or often, there's an adult advisor or parents that sometimes help, but they are under the control of students. So we'll continue to run our activities as usual at the middle school and high school, and though our student activities have not been under board control, we have audited our student activity accounts, which is generally a, a pattern for school districts, and there is a supplemental report that the board gets every year. There's about $153,000 worth of high school student activities, and it's things like the band fund, or the choir, or ECHOON, which I understand is the yearbook, and student council. And $33,000 in middle school for all the clubs and the band, and for yearbook and student council. So they'll be recorded through the general fund, and now we'll just have to comply with all of the UFR standards. I don't think it will be a stretch for this group, for the types of activities they do. And then in fiscal year 2020, so when we come around to next year's audit, student activities will just be a part of the regular audit and reported as one of the components of the general fund. So here's our next steps. This is a resolution, a model resolution actually, that we got from the Minnesota School Board Association, that is very technical, but what it says is that we as a board are giving direction that this become part of our general fund, so that there would be no question about what our board wants us to do. And this was at the recommendation of that subcommittee of the Department of Education and of MSBA, that the board passes resolution. So that's all I have on that. Just wanted you to be aware, and then we'll have the resolution at next month's, or next meeting, June 24th.
Yeah, Patricia, I just want to be sort of clear about, and we talked about this a little bit in our pre-meeting, about what is meant by student activities that are covered by this resolution and what is not. And I know you've got some examples that you've listed there, and I just, suggesting that the resolution be modified to include exactly what we're talking about, maybe what we're not, we can ponder that, but this is not including sports booster clubs, or, or PTO accounts, or, that's a different issue, but it's not what this statute is applying to, right?
Specifically excludes those that are under the control of adults and completely separate from the school district, booster clubs, PTAs, also sunshine funds, if employees want to raise money for each other. We aren't running that through our books, it has nothing to do with adult-based programs that are run by adults.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? All right, we'll look at the resolution when it comes, comes back to us next time around. Thank you. So, next up is the Climate Leadership Resolution, and we have a revised draft that has been provided to the board, and we also, because the one we had last week was not as, the last board meeting was not as clear, we also provided it to the Roots and Shoots folks, so that they would have a chance to see it before, before tonight, because that's our typical policy, to give people a chance to see what we're about to vote on in the action agenda. And so it's good to see you here, Zoe. Okay. Anne, Casey's not here, because she's representing us at the GED graduation, and so Aston and I spoke with Anne after we had about the resolution, and you may remember, last time, Anne asked if we would be appropriate to include something about education and what we do in that regard. So, the last, be it further resolved on the draft that you're seeing, is a new addition that is designed to put something in front of us that deals with that concern. I had been concerned that I didn't want us to get down in the weeds doing operational work, and so you can see that the way this is drafted is it's simply doing what we always do, which is designating the superintendent to be responsible with his team, and it's pretty broadly, it, it says to ask our superintendent to take appropriate action to ensure that the district's operational and educational undertakings reasonably reflect the board's commitment to environmental and climate leadership. So it's sort of the broad, general direction. It has been reviewed with both Superintendent Aston, and he's reviewed it with his team, including Patrick Duffy, who's in charge of curriculum, because we didn't want to, I didn't want to tread on anybody's toes and overstep our role as a board, so that it was, so for my comfort level, I wanted to, and I assume the rest of the board would also want to have their input. So that's the broad introduction to what we have here, and now Aston, and you want to speak at all, if I've gotten that, you know, how you feel about, I don't, I don't know how the board feels about it, but I want to hear how you feel about it, then we can hear from the board.
Chair Corrus, members of the board. As Chair Corrus has stated, we, we met and discussed it, and I believe the language is broad enough that it aligns with the overall goals that we're working towards from an educational standpoint and from an operational standpoint, and even as we heard a little bit from Patricia this evening, as related to some of the long-term facility maintenance work that we're doing, how all of these things work together to help us move towards the goals that are listed here in the Climate Action, our Climate Leader, Leadership Resolution. So I don't have any concerns with how the resolutions were.
And I will say, I, I drafted this and then reviewed it with Aston and Anne and, and Patrick, but I didn't create it out of, out of nothingness. I had found another board that had adopted something similar, not exactly the same. I adapted it to fit our style, and I heard my English teacher talking about parallel construction, and you know. So, so that's kind of where this came to be, and, and so, comments?
It seems appropriate, I mean, I'd, I'd been kind of in favor of Anne giving it a shot, and I'm glad that you, that you all took a look at it, and I think it's appropriate that it's, that it's a broad statement, because we don't want to, you know, get too pigeonholed into, to anything, but at the same time, it, it does reflect that we want our, our values to be reflected in education, and our superintendent will be, you know, watching on it. So I think it's, I think it's appropriate.
I also, I think that it works well, and I think that if the, this resolution is going to be referred to as the Climate Leadership Resolution, then it certainly does make sense that we endeavor to demonstrate leadership in what we're doing in the classroom as well. And I think that this does so broadly, and I, I hope that the whole crew of the Roots and Shoots Club is proud of this. I hope that you're comfortable and with what's been modified and drafted and, and put forth here for our action agenda this evening, and I just wanted to thank Zoe and Katie and the rest of the team, and their, including their adult advisors, for everything you've done to advocate, to bring this forward to us. Thank you.
Yeah, I, if I haven't been clear about it in my other comments, you know, I'd had some reservations, but I found that this language really met my concerns, and, and Aston and Patrick, and so I think it is appropriate as well to include and broaden this beyond a simple facilities, resolution to be a little bit broader, while recognizing our primary role as educators. No other comments? We'll move on to the next, and this will be on our action agenda later. Next up is the West Metro Education Program, WEMAP update. Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Chair Corrus. So, I have been the board liaison to the Joint Powers Board for WEMAP for the past three years. I've been on the executive committee for the past two years, and the final action taken by MEMAP took place on Tuesday, June 4th, where the Joint Powers Board has concluded all of its outstanding work, paid all of its outstanding bills, and took action to formally dissolve the Joint Powers Board. So, the, the key highlights that I'm really excited about with WEMAP, the, the work that is important about WEMAP, the civil rights research experience, the Boys to Men, the racial equity coaching, models that we have gotten great PB from, all of that work is still continuing, it's just not happening through a body that is a joint powers board with us and Robbinsdale, Minneapolis, Eden Prairie, Wayzata, and St. Anthony, New Brighton. And so, I'm really impressed with the work that Chair Volna did in his leadership with doing the, the wrap-up. It had a final audit, there were absolutely no findings in the audit, so the, the final piece of this report is just to let everybody in the community know, the Joint Powers Board is dissolved, and I have my Thursday mornings and many Thursday evenings back to myself. So, any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a, a statement of appreciation for Karen, for all of those Thursday mornings, and all of those Thursday evenings, and all of the headaches and frustrations and challenges that have come along with this process, and winding down specifically. So, thanks for taking one for the team, Karen.
You are all welcome. Who knew it would be so hard to wind down an operation? But, it's done, and it really is done, so thank you, everybody.
Yes, I, I echo Mary's comments, as do we all, I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you so much, Karen. Well done. Celebrate this one. Yep. All right. Next up is Policy Development, First Reading Policy 912, Adult Education Programs.
Chair Gores, members of the board. Policy 912, as you'll see, there are, there were no MSBA recommended changes. The changes that you see listed here are local changes, changes that were offered to us by our Community Education Department. And it's really just around making sure that we're using appropriate language to reflect current expectations around the diplomas that students are receiving. So besides that, there are.
Aston, I would just ask us to double check that it looks, the first sentence, and maybe I just am reading it badly, but it looks like there might be some words missing. If you read that second sentence, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I will review this again with our community education staff to make sure that they, they reflect what we want to communicate.
Yeah, maybe we just missed a sentence or two, a word or two from the original one. I see what, see what you find. All right, next up we have the Policy Development, Second Reading of Policies 905, Community Involvement in Decision-Making, 907, Rewards, and 910, Early Childhood Family Education. This is the second reading and what we have in our packet reflects the changes we talked about last time. So is there, are there any comments by any board members on those? Okay, then now we are up to the Consent Agenda. And I would simply note before we have any motions on the Consent Agenda that there is a typo on the May 13th scored meeting minutes that Julia will correct, but other than that, we have the Consent Agenda up. And so any motion and approval of it will be, assuming that that typo will be corrected. So is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. First on the action agenda is approval of the 2018-19 Probationary Non-Renewal Staffing Resolution. First, I would ask if there's a motion to waive the reading of the resolution. So that's moved by Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. That carries 5-0. Next, it is recommended that the school board approve the resolution relating to the non-renewal of the teaching contract of one probationary teacher. Is there a motion? Moved by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. This, we had similar action with respect to other teachers at our last score meeting and this, Rick, you might want to just say a brief word about it before we move forward.
Chair members of the board, Superintendent, yes, last, last board meeting, we had a resolution for 11 teachers and just inadvertently, this name was not on that list. And so that it should have been a resolution of 12. This is just cleaning up the, the last and final transaction. The teacher was notified, the teachers union was notified and, you know, sorry about that.
Any other discussion by anyone? Okay, I will call for a vote and it needs to be a roll call vote. Karen?
Aye.
Director Morrison. Chair Gores.
Aye.
Vice Chair Tombeck. Director Waters, aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Next on the action agenda is the Climate Leadership Resolution. It is recommended that the school board approve the Climate Leadership Resolution as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a tie, but I'm going to give it to Joe. Seconded by Joe. Is there any discussion on this?
Echoing what I said before now, since we have a few more folks in the audience, thank you so much for your advocacy. Thank you so much for pushing us on this and being the leaders that we count on our youth to be. So thank you very much.
I would echo that. You really, you really helped work with us on making this what I think is a resolution that will be very good for our district. So thank you. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. Next up is the Policy Development, Second Reading of Policies 905, Community Involvement in Decision-Making, 907, Rewards, and 910, Early Childhood Family Education. Does anyone want this to be separated out and voted on separately? All right, we won't do that. It is recommended that the school board approve the Second Readings of Policies 905, Community Education and Decision-Making, 907, Rewards, and 910, Early Childhood Family Education as presented. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ken. Is there a second? Seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. Next up is Communications and Transmittals.
Okay, this Saturday is the 15th, May 15th. Particular Annual Parade will commence on, at the normal route at noon and we will be participating in that. So come out and cheer us on.
June 15th. We're excited to be there. Hope you'll be there.
I just wanted to give a special shout out to the volunteers who put on the middle school party, end of the year party on Friday. I hope I'm getting this right, but I believe that the chairs of that were Leah Enklum and Lara Truitt. And so thank you very much to both of them. They put on a great party for 1,060 students at the middle school. Every grade got to participate. The weather was beautiful. Again, there were bouncy houses, which you might not think that 11 to 14-year-olds would be into, but I promise you, 11 to 14-year-olds are very into bouncy houses still and popsicles and dunk tank. And this year they added a DJ and the DJs got out there and did some dancing. And I just particularly want to call that out because it seemed to me that that was a very culturally relevant activity to engage in, judged by the number of our kids of color who were dancing and singing and hanging out there in that particular space. I think that we did something right there. And when I say we, I mean our volunteers and our leaders. So thank you very much to Lara and Leah and to all of the middle school teachers and staff who were there supporting the students and participating and having a great time with everybody.
I too got to attend the Susan Lindgren fifth grade celebration and the three kids who spoke did a really excellent job. They're very articulate. But that, at the end of the program, there's a video and it captures highlights of their whole year. And a big one was Camp at a Hoppy, but they also mentioned IB exhibition and the showcase event where they get to pick a project that they are interested in pursuing. But many of the kids spoke about their teachers who helped them along the way and they also had great advice for the fourth graders who will soon be fifth graders because the fifth graders, of course, are the key leaders in the elementary school. And the advice was really great related to the IB words of appropriate risk-taking and try something new and the kindness retreat that they experienced. So I just, I was really impressed with the group of kids, really impressed with their end of year video and really impressed with the teachers there to make it all happen. So thank you.
All right. It's a great end of the year. It's always exciting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mary. Is there a second? Seconded by Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries 5-0. Happy summer. Let's go enjoy it, Joe.